... and students, offering relevant SOL-aligned learning resources for grades K through 12. Learn more at eMediaVA.org.
At home, at work, or on the road, bring Radio IQ along for the best in news, information, and entertainment. Just download the Radio IQ or TuneIn app from the App Store.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and from MathWorks, creators of MATLAB and Simulink software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks, accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at MathWorks.com. And BetterHelp, connecting people with a therapist online for issues like depression and relationships. Twenty-five thousand therapists are available through BetterHelp using a computer or smartphone. BetterHelp.com/public.
It's Here and Now. In Haiti, 4.4 million people are experiencing extreme hunger. That is almost half the country, which is plagued by recurring natural disasters and continued violence. Let's bring in Jean Martin Bauer, the World Food Program's representative in Haiti. Welcome.
Hi, Scott.
So, more than one million people in Haiti are in a situation described as an emergency. Can you first give us a quick snapshot of how things look on the ground? You're based in Haiti.
The way things look is that Haiti's facing another food crisis right now. That means people don't have enough to eat, that they're resorting to things like buying cheaper foods or eating fewer meals, eating lower-quality food, and that increases nutrition risk. But it's also meaning that children are falling into severe malnutrition. A recent survey in a neighborhood of Port-au-Prince assessed that one out of five children are acutely malnourished.
Now, hunger crises often have many reasons. Let me ask you to walk us through some key factors, perhaps from the perspective of a family there. Last year, there was an earthquake and flooding that destroyed a lot of infrastructure, roads, farms. How does that hit a family?
A family right now has to pay a lot more money to buy the same basket of goods. The numbers that we have indicate that compared to a year ago, people have to pay 50% more just to buy the same basket of goods. Inflation is a huge problem for people day to day. There's also violence in Port-au-Prince right now, and that's preventing people from either coming to the markets to sell their goods or their produce. It's also preventing people from going to work in a way, in a normal way.
And I want to ask you more about this gang violence than, so if I am trying to access, get access to the market, either to sell food I've grown, produced, or to buy food for my family, right now, is access, is it too dangerous, in some cases, too risky, to even try to get to the market?
There are many different situations, but I remember meeting a man in the north of Haiti, far from Port-au-Prince, and the gang violence is concentrated in Port-au-Prince. This man is a banana farmer. His name is Theodore, and he'd grown a few acres of bananas and was telling me that they were nearly ripe and ready to go to the market. And he told me he didn't know how he was going to sell his banana crop because the road to Port-au-Prince is controlled by a gang. And he lost access to the major market he had. And that's also a story we hear in the south of Haiti. The south of Haiti's been cut off from Port-au-Prince for more than a year now. So either the food spoils, or it's sold at very low prices, but they're out of options. And the risk is that these farmers will stop producing if they don't have the certainty of being able to sell the food they grow.
There are so many factors to what's going on here. For the World Food Program, what are the main things it has to do now, given this acute, increasingly acute crisis? I'm sure you're trying to raise money while much of the world is focused on Ukraine instead.
Well, to be honest, there actually is an impact of the situation in Ukraine on Haiti right now. I told you about sharply higher food prices in Haiti. Part of that is due to the ripple effects of the Ukraine crisis on global food markets. Haiti imports 50% of its food, and for some food products, it's more like 80%, including the key staple, rice. So there's been an impact of the Ukraine crisis on Haiti indirectly through higher costs for imports, and that's contributing to the food crisis that's taking place right now. And what we're trying to do to respond is we're providing, first of all, humanitarian assistance. We're making sure people who need assistance get cash to buy food or food transfers. We're reaching from 1.3 million to 1.7 million in the country. As you mentioned earlier in the interview, Scott, there's, I mean, there was an earthquake in 2012, a cholera outbreak. There was Hurricane Matthew in 2016. There was another earthquake last year. So these things just don't stop in Haiti, and we need to strengthen the systems that feed people in Haiti. And what we're trying to do at the World Food Program is work with the country's small farmers and give them a chance to feed their own people. And one of the projects we're quite proud of is the Homegrown School Feeding Project. Every day, 100,000 schoolchildren in Haiti get a meal that's exclusively made up of locally-produced food. And hopefully, by doing that type of thing, we're strengthening the farming system in Haiti so that, once again, the country's able to feed itself, even when there are problems like the ones it's going through right now.
Jean Martin Bauer is the World Food Program's representative in Haiti. Jean Martin, thank you so much for the time.
Thank you, Scott.
And this afternoon, on All Things Considered, increasingly hot summers amplified by climate change make air conditioning more important than ever. There are a few programs providing AC to people who can't afford it, but they're having trouble keeping up with all the requests. You can hear that story right here on your NPR station, or tell your smart speaker to play your local member station by name. Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Scott Tong.
And I'm Celeste Headley. You're listening to Here and Now.
Introduce Reverend Hooker. He is with Providence Presbyterian Church. And I'd like the Reverend to maybe come on up and tell us a little bit about his church. And then when he's ready to give us, or start us an invocation, I would ask, if everyone wants to, if you want to stand up and join us in that. And then after the invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend.
Well, thank you for having me. My name's Jake Hooker. I'm the pastor at Providence Presbyterian Church. We meet at the American Legion Building in Salem, Virginia, and grateful to be here. We're a new church, just got started in April. Easter, actually, was our first worship service, and so we've been going for about four months. So it's going great, and thank you all so much for having me today.
How many parishioners do you have?
So right now, we have about 60 folks coming regularly. So it's exciting, it's fun, but we're just, we're just getting started, brand new. So hopefully, that means good things ahead for us.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You ready?
Yes, sir.
If everyone wishes, if you want, please stand. If you don't, you can sit. Join us in the invocation.
Let's pray. Great God and Father, we thank you for how you have richly blessed us beyond measure. Your word reminds us that every good gift and every perfect gift is from above, coming down from the Father of Lights, with whom there is no variation or shadow due to change. We thank you that we have a great country that we're so privileged to live in. We thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy here, that we often so easily take for granted. This afternoon, I'm particularly mindful of our freedom of speech and our freedom of religion. There's so many around the world that never get to experience those great freedoms that we enjoy here. And so with that in mind, Lord, I lift up our country's governing officials to you today, in every branch of government, the executive, the legislative, the judicial branches at every level. But today, Lord, I lift up the Rona County Board of Supervisors. May they embody your compassion, justice, love, but most of all, Lord, we ask that you would grant them a great measure of your wisdom. May they look to you for guidance. May they do that which brings honor and glory to you. Grant Rona County and the Rona Valley as a whole peace and prosperity. Lord, we recognize that these are great goals, so great that no one person can do them on their own. We need one another, but, Lord, most importantly, we need you and your help. And so may this Board of Supervisors, may they look to you for guidance and for wisdom. This psalmist reminds us that you have never forsaken those who seek you. May they seek you and do your will this day and in the days and weeks and months that lie ahead. Strengthen them, grant them wisdom for the great task that they have, that you have laid upon their shoulders, Lord. And I ask all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Good afternoon and welcome to our meeting for August 23, 2022. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesdays at 3:00 PM. Public hearings are held at 7:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. Our meetings are broadcast live on RV TV, Channel 3, and will be rebroadcast on Thursday at 7:00 PM and on Sunday from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM. Board of Supervisor meetings can also be viewed online through Rona County's website at www.ronacountyva.gov. Our meetings are closed captioned, so it is important for everyone to speak directly into the microphones at the podium. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or attend Board of Supervisor meetings should contact the clerk to the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. And please turn off your cell phones or place them on silent. I am advised that our webcasting system is not functioning at the moment. We will hope that maybe tomorrow, it might be rebroadcast, and it'll be functioning by then. Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mrs. Hooker?
Here.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here. Item being request to postpone, add, or change the order of agenda items. Do any board members want to postpone or change the order of the agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Kaywood?
No changes.
Mr. Lubek?
No changes, sir.
Thank you. Item C1, Proclamations, Resolutions, Recognitions, and Awards. C1 is a recognition of our fire and rescue personnel on Swift Water Rescue Team deployed to Buchanan County, Virginia, to assist with flood relief. Chief Griffiths?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We appreciate the opportunity to come before you today to recognize some of our members in their recent deployment to Buchanan County, Virginia, as part of our Swift Water Rescue Team. With us today is Battalion Chief Craig Robertson, Captain John Richardson, Lieutenant Daniel Lacy, paramedic firefighter Kent Firestone, and firefighter EMT Dakota Dolgus was also part of this team, but he's on vacation this week, so he's unable to be with us. But really, in July, throughout the day, July 12, Buchanan County, Virginia was truly decimated by just massive amounts of rains. And if you've ever been in that area, it's really just a funnel. It all funnels through one valley, and it really decimated that area. It moved houses off foundations, watched cars away. They were truly impacted in a way that thankfully did not impact us. But that area reached out to the State Emergency Operations Center for Swift Water Rescue Teams. And very early, the morning of July 13, I believe, all this started about 4:30 AM, 5:00 AM. We got notified, and this group was willing to pack up and hit the road very quickly. They did it so quickly, they were the first team to get to the command post to be deployed into an area. And I believe what they were told is, "We don't know what you're going to find, because nobody's been there yet." So we really appreciate their willingness and their, the ability to go and use their abilities. Not only that they do it every day here in Rona County for our department, but to be able to take that experience and capabilities and to go assist another jurisdiction in their time of need is truly amazing and remarkable, and the job that they did. So I'm actually going to let Captain John Richardson kind of tell you a little bit more about exactly what did take place.
Good afternoon. That morning started out for me like any other, going to get up and get ready to go to work, and sitting in my chair, putting my shoes on, and this fancy computer that I wear on my wrist now, because my wife thought that'd be a good idea, starts vibrating and making all kinds of noise. And of course, I don't have my additional assistance to be able to see with me at that point. So all I can make out is something about SWAN, which is the Swift Water Alert Network. And I'm thinking, it's awful early for them to be doing another test of that. But they like to keep it interesting. So I went ahead and finished getting dressed and got my stuff together and didn't think to find my spectacles and make sure that it wasn't any more than that. But anyway, got in the car and started heading to work. And Battalion Chief Robertson calls me. I'm like, hmm, this is strange. And he's like, were you on the meeting? No, sir, I haven't even made it yet to work. Oh, well, when you get there, go ahead and start packing. Y'all are heading for Buchanan. Okay, all right. So I'm thinking, hmm, Buchanan, up north, about 45 minutes towards Lexington, probably. Nope, mistaken. So as soon as I get to work and finally get to talk to some people, I realized that it's back to Buchanan County, where we were at about a year ago as well, when Hurley went through and had similar circumstances. So I had a much better idea of what we were getting ready to go deal with. And at that point, it turned into, luckily, the outgoing shift and the oncoming shift, trying to get boats moved, on the trailers, motors moved, hooked up, trucks packed, people packed, equipment ready, and try not to forget anything. So from 6:00, when everybody's reporting to go to work, I think we were out the door about 6:22 with the truck with all the Swift Water gear, double-decker boat trailer with two boats and a raft strapped down and headed for Buchanan, Virginia, the one in southwest Virginia, not toward Lexington. So, once we got there, within about, I don't know, 30 minutes of where they'd asked to get to, you could tell that they had had significant damage from the amount of rainfall that had occurred. And for whatever reason, it seems like storms like to hang out for several hours. They pick one mountaintop, and they stay there for four, five, six hours and just dump five to eight inches of rain. And it's catastrophic when that happens. So we checked in, did the usual paperwork, et cetera, and were assigned our law enforcement liaison, which we didn't get when we went to Hurley. So this was a much better setup, having law enforcement with us when we left. They know the area and have better radio communications in that area than we do coming in from several hours away. We went out and started our search along Dismal River Road, if that gives you any indication of what this place is like. And the only way you can look is up, whichever side of the mountain you want to look, because you're at the very bottom. And it didn't take us long before we started seeing trucks and cars in the river, houses on trailers off of foundations. And it just reminded me a lot of the year before when we were down in Hurley. So we picked a spot to stage, because the roads were pretty much impassable at that point. The state trooper that was with us decided to park his brand-new vehicle and hop in with Battalion Chief Robertson and proceed on in a four-wheel drive that might actually get him where they needed to be. And so we picked a good staging spot and had them go ahead, because they had some reports of some people that were needing assistance. And once we figured out where that was at, and took about a 40-mile route to get there because the roads were impassable still for us. So we had to go back out to the main road, I think across two ridges and down into another valley to get to where we were needed. And I think that afternoon, we were able to pull five people out. One elderly lady that needed assistance, and then a family, I think it was Grandma and Grandpa, and he had recently had a stroke, and they had both grandkids with them that were, I think, about three and eight, maybe. But we were able to get all of them in life jackets, get them in the raft, and back across where their driveways and bridges used to be was probably about a 30-foot gap with about a 12-to-15 drop, 12-to-15-foot drop to the water. So we were able to get them all safely across and transportation either back to their families or to the shelter that had been set up. And at that point, we were able to reconvene back to the command post, because that was about, what, 9:00 at night, I guess, when we made it back to the command post. And they cut us loose to go get some sleep, and then come back the next morning and start again checking vehicles in the water that nobody was able to get to the previous day. And I think by about 1:00, we had finished checking all that, and then we were released to come back to Rona County. So I was happy. We were able to help five people safely across, no damage to the equipment or us, and everybody returned safe and sound. So that was the gist of it.
Sounds scary.
Yeah, what a story.
How many other, how many other Swift Boat operations besides Rona County?
I don't know the total number. I know the state police was there in force. They had a contingent of boats as well. I know we had Rona County, Rona City, Salem, Bedford, Bartlett, and Lynchburg, that at one point all were operating in the area. Several of them came in that day and left that night. And then I think three or four of the teams stayed the night and came back again the next day to finish searching for any more victims that may have still been out in the, in the water that was still, hadn't quite calmed down enough that you could get to them easily. So, but luckily, there were no fatalities on this one that anybody's aware of to this point.
Comments from any board members?
Thank you for your efforts. It reminds me of 53 years ago, Ellison County, where I lived, I was in high school, was hit with a Camille, and that was pretty devastating. So I can only imagine what you all saw. It happened about the same time, actually, August 19 was the 53rd anniversary. And at that time, some years later, I realized that Highlands Five folks and others, I think, from Benton went up there to help out, because that was truly a devastating event. So these things need all the help they can from folks in other parts of the state and country, and I want to thank you for your service.
Yeah, and, you know, I agree with the chairman. You know, that's a scary story. You made it sound like, ah, it's just usual, your routine, and we appreciate that and your professionalism. But it is darn scary to the people that are out there trying to figure out what's going on. And it's the bravery of you guys, and I just don't, you know, want to let just pass by. It really is brave people to go out and do that, and we commend you. Thank you, Chief, for letting us share that story with us and hear that. Just best of luck with you guys in future rescues, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your support.
I would like to just add to that, however I can, with the words of commendation and bravery was what first came to my mind. And just the selfless act of, oh, we're going somewhere to endanger, to help others, and did it as, it's just part of my job. And we so appreciate that. We truly do, and we commend you for all that you've done and will continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think it's, it doesn't need to be said three more times, but, you know, this board has always supported our public safety. And we're blessed to have you here in Rona County, serving our citizens. But we're also blessed to have your expertise, especially in the Swift Water arena, that, you know, that could have been in our backyard, too. And so we're thankful that you were willing to go and help someone else, but also having you here for that time that we may need, need you here in the valley. So, but thank you for everything you do. I know all of us standing here would like to thank you for your support, because we wouldn't have the skills and abilities we have if you hadn't stepped up and supported us a few years back when we stood this team up. And it has helped us greatly to get where we're at today by the support that's been handed over to us. And heartfelt thanks to all of you so that we are able to do that.
We have to thank you. It takes very brave people to run to danger. A lot of us would not. And you are truly, you and your crew and your staff. It's easy to say the words, but there are not many people who run to danger.
But what an adrenaline rush, you know? I'm just kidding.
But thank you. We needed to recognize you, and that this is, I really hope that our citizens realize the quality of the people that we have working in our public safety operations. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't want to break the camera.
Item C2 on our agenda is a proclamation commemorating the 30th anniversary of Play It Again Sports and expressing the appreciation to Chick and Joan Dewis for 30 years of providing outstanding products and service to the Rona community. Ms. Lubek?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is always a pleasure to recognize legacy businesses in Rona County and to celebrate their achievements and accomplishments and successes. This one is a little different and particularly memorable because they are a retail business that has been in Rona County for 30 years, and it's a family that has been in Roanoke County for 30 years, and it's a family-owned business. We don't see many of them that are still in operation today. But Play It Again Sports has been in the Roanoke Valley since '92, under the ownership of Chick and Joan Dewis. So, 30 years here in Roanoke County is memorable and notable. They're well-known for their diverse sporting goods offerings, their excellent customer service. They serve the students in our school system who need sporting equipment, and they also support our outdoor economy with their products. They are a very valuable, dependable local retailer, and they've been voted many times by the Roanoke Magazine as the best sporting goods store in the Roanoke Valley. So, I think we have a lot to be really proud of, and I just wanted to personally thank the Dewis family. I've known them for many, many years, and they have been stellar community citizens, and wanted to also thank them for all their contributions to the community.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the proclamation?
Proclamation commemorating the 30th anniversary of Play It Again Sports in Roanoke County. Whereas Play It Again Sports opened for business in 1992, marking 30 years of operation in the Roanoke region and 20 years in Roanoke County. And whereas Play It Again Sports began with two paid employees as well as the two owners and their four children, today, Play It Again Sports is operated by Chick and Joan Dewis, employs an average of 17 people annually, and has had two dedicated managers over the past 30 years. And whereas Play It Again Sports is a locally-owned national franchise that in its 30 years of operation, has experienced economic hurdles which can be difficult for small businesses, but has remained steadfast in their operation and continues to provide exceptional service and products. And whereas Play It Again Sports has grown physically and gained a solid reputation regionally with their customer base, providing equipment and customer service that has made them an entrusted sporting goods retailer and small business in the community. Their work has been recognized by many, including being nominated for Best Sporting Goods in the Roanoke Magazine year after year. Whereas Chick and Joan Dewis, their original owners of Play It Again Sports, retired in January of 2022, and now their eldest son, Tony Dewis, is purchasing and operating the business into the future, establishing Play It Again Sports as a family-owned legacy business. And now, therefore, with the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County, Virginia, do hereby issue this proclamation to commemorate the 30th anniversary of Play It Again Sports, and the Board recognizes and values the impact of a dedicated small business community. And further, the Board extends its congratulations and deep appreciation to the Dewis family and the employees of Play It Again Sports for their many contributions to our community, the local economy, and our citizens.
There is no vote required on the proclamation, but I'd open up the floor to the board members if any board member would like to make a comment.
I would just like to say, congratulations. You've survived through rough times the last few years, and that is in itself just an incredible feat, but you've done it well, and we're so appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to say, this reminds me, I've got some other items to bring over there. You know, my boys, when they were young, we'd go in there and you'd have to pull them out because they, they love all kinds of sports. And so, you know, it's, it's good, it's good to see you all being successful for 30 years and hope you have 30 more years and then some. But I appreciate the role you played in our community, and it's, it's been a great experience for everyone to enjoy your business. Thank you.
Mr. Radford.
Yeah. Chick, it's good to see you again. So, we have a little, little story there. Yeah, yeah. So, we were building all those condos, and we went over to see Chick, and that was the best place to go buy the exercise equipment. We built condos, 12 buildings, over five, six years. We always go over to, to Chick. I don't know if you were in the business yet, Tony, but from the late 90s to 2005, we equipped all those exercise rooms. So, you're still servicing them, I guess?
I am.
Fantastic. And then one year, you guys, I bought a big exercise equipment from a personal home, and I remember you guys lugging that thing into the house, putting it together down in my basement. I had gone through knee surgery, so I needed something there. But it's great, great to see you guys are still, still in the business. Tony, I'm sure we'll, we're still building stuff, just not as big. So, you never know, we'll come back in for exercise equipment. But successful, yes. I'm so happy and that we can celebrate that with you guys.
Want to thank you. We spent, my family has spent a fair amount of money in your establishment. But I want to thank you.
He thanked you.
Glad to see that you survived all the good times and the bad times of the national economy. That's, that's very impressive.
It's been a ride.
You want to take pictures?
Chick asked me if he was dressed appropriately for the board meeting today, and I said, you're dressed retail appropriate.
Retired retail.
You want me on the other side? All right. Next item on our agenda, item C3, is a resolution of appreciation of Board of Supervisors on the retirement of Mark Cartwright after 27 years as Assistant Director of Parks and Rec. Mr. Blunt. You can tell some lies about Mark now.
There is. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I would love to stand up and just tell stories for the next 30 minutes about Mark's career here at Roanoke County, but I can't think of a finer servant to our citizens than Mark Cartwright. While I haven't worked with Mark for this full 27 years, county, I got to work side-by-side with him for 11 years. And Mark has a, has a servant heart. And what makes him special is he's even a more fine person. And he's been so great to our citizens, but he's also been a great resource and mentor to our staff, both from a full-time and a part-time standpoint. And we've had lots of discussions over the years about, you know, different employees and their performance, and Mark's always had the opinion, we can make this work, we can mentor these staff. And many times, Mark's been a success at being able to, to do that with, with our folks. Also, too, with Mark's personality and his disposition, he is what I consider our citizen specialist. If we have a really, really difficult situation, we send Mark in to, to work with, with our citizens and, you know, his best case, trying to be able to, to resolve it. And today is, you know, it's an honor to be able to be here in front of you to, to recognize Mark. I have enjoyed our 11 years together. And, you know, as I had shared at Mark's retirement reception, I've known Mark for over 20 years. And we, you know, I think have had a very strong bond together, and that's, I think, what's made our, our working relationship so, so special. And I know Mark has had that same type of bond with many of our volunteers in the community. Mark is really is what is the backbone of our, behind our volunteer coaches and recreation clubs for our youth sports. And, you know, outside of many of Mark's accomplishments that we'll hear about here in a few minutes, I think for, for me, what is his specialty is planning of special events and the many wonderful things that Roanoke County offers to our citizens, both as a, you know, as a, as a community service, but also in terms of tourism. We wouldn't have had many of the events like Kite Festival and the Christmas tree lighting and Illuminights without this man right here and being able to put the, the science behind the mechanism for how these events take place. And, you know, I think we owe a gratitude to, to Mark for what he's been to our citizens as well as to other county departments for the last 27 years.
Mr. Chairman. Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution expressing the appreciation of the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County to Mark E. Cartwright, Assistant Director of Parks upon his retirement after more than 27 years of service. Whereas Mark E. Cartwright was employed by Roanoke County on June 19th, 1995, as the Assistant Director of Parks. And whereas Mr. Cartwright retired on August 1st, 2022, after 27 years of devoted, faithful, and expert service to Roanoke County. And whereas Mr. Cartwright, through his employment with Roanoke County, has been instrumental in improving the quality of life and providing services to the citizens of Roanoke County. And whereas throughout Mr. Cartwright's tenure with Roanoke County, he was instrumental in the development of high-quality and accessible parks, facilities, greenways, blueways, and trails for the Parks Recreation and Tourism Department. He was a leader in the coordination of the 2007 Departmental Master Plan and the 2016 Explore Park Adventure Plan. And whereas Mr. Cartwright guided the development of the Capital Improvement Incentive Fund and Park Partner Volunteer Programs, which were tremendously successful and duplicated across the Commonwealth by various agencies. And whereas Mr. Cartwright impacted the lives of the citizens of Roanoke County on a daily basis by ensuring a well-maintained community park system, which provided a variety of amenities for all ages and abilities, was available for their enjoyment. And whereas Mr. Cartwright coordinated the community usability of park amenities and athletic complexes with numerous organizations, including Roanoke County Recreation Club, President's Council, Roanoke County Public Schools, as well as private organizations, large and small. And whereas Mr. Cartwright directed the daily maintenance operations of park grounds as well as the, as managed the department's response to countywide emergencies and the snow removal operations, and contributed to the renovation and the 2001 reopening of Camp Roanoke. And whereas Mr. Cartwright was an exemplary department liaison who built strong relationships with passionate volunteer organizations who cared deeply about certain parks and amenities, including the Green Hill Park Equestrian Center, Routhoff Point, Apiahola Gardens, Mayflower Hills, Distal, get, blah, Dist golf course, Waldron Park Soapbox Derby Track, and Explore Park Mountain Bike Trails. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County expresses its deepest appreciation and the appreciation of the citizens of Roanoke County to Mark E. Cartwright for more than 27 years of capable, loyal, and dedicated service to Roanoke County. And the Board of Supervisors does express its best wishes for a happy and productive retirement.
I would welcome a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Second.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker.
Yes.
Mr. North.
Yes.
Mr. Radford.
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney.
Yes. Any comments from board members?
I'd like to just say, Mark, congratulations on your retirement. I sent it at your luncheon recently, three weeks ago. You have shown the spirit of Roanoke County in everything you do for everyone you work with. And I will just share one more little tidbit that I didn't then. Whenever I worked with Mark when I was president of the Booster Club in Benton, Mark would always beat me up the field or in his office or someplace, wherever the issue was we were dealing with. And he'd say, well, let me tell you what we can't do, but let me tell you what we can do. And so, he always left you feeling like there was something that was going to be done. And, you know, that just kept on manifesting over the years. And, you know, I missed working with you, but I want to be the first to say today that you've done a great job. And there's no doubt in my mind that you have set the mark high for many others to follow in the future. Congratulations.
Yeah. Mark, and ditto what Mr. North said about, you know, you're working with the county for all those years and the things you've done. I, I think a personal story always kind of helps a little bit. While we didn't have a lot of contact over those years, my kids and I were involved with Roanoke Star and all those soccer tournaments we always had at Green Hill Park. And one of the biggest challenges you guys had, and it was always coming down to you because Pete Haslip would tell you to handle it. And that was when it was pouring down rain and you had to break all those kids' hearts and close the field because it was, it was going to tear the field up. But, you know, to me, you had to do it. And that's, that's part of preserving the resources that we, that we have. And so, you know, hats off to you on making those tough calls. You know, you have to do them. But the other, other parts of what you did, just, you know, thank you for your years of service and your compassion and, and the way you spoke to people. Appreciate it.
Madam Hooker.
So, I just want to add to that and say that your reputation precedes you. I had heard good things about you before I ever met you, Mark. And just congratulations on your retirement. Well deserved. Thank you for all you've done.
I think Doug said it best in the beginning, you know, servant's heart. And I think that we've all seen that, who have dealt with you, I mean, have had to work with you, and I have through Explore Park and even down to the storm about a year or so ago up on Muse Drive. And I called the administration, go, what are we doing? Here comes Mark. You know, so, you know, he, he got them people calmed down. They were worried about, you know, it was going to be left there for weeks. But, you know, he, he was able to calm everybody down. But I do think that this is a loss for the county because, I mean, I, I agree with Ms. Hooker. Your reputa, reputation precedes you long before I met you. So, but I do wish you the best. I hope you enjoy your retirement and do something fun.
Mark, just thank you for everything you've done for Roanoke County and, and the children of Roanoke County because I, our Parks and Rec program is really focused on, on the kids. I can, I enjoyed your retirement party a little recently at, at Green Ridge. I was a little disappointed that Mr. Haslip did not tell the true stories about you, but I'm sure they're all there. They're rumbling around. But county has a small gift for you, and if you'd like to say any words?
Thank you, sir.
Floor is yours.
I'm not sure what I can add to all that. Thank you so much for your heartfelt comments.
This is my last time I get to address you. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I really do want to just offer my sincere appreciation for the support this board has given the Park Recreation and Tourism Department over the, over the many years I've worked there. Your support in leveraging monies with grants and whatnot allows us to do some phenomenal things, whether it be small park improvements or new facilities, sports complexes for tournaments and, and the recreational leagues, playgrounds for our advocates, new pickleball and tennis courts for our players. That's, it seems like it's going real well. Greenways and blueways, work with all the folks that enjoyed all that. And of course, our special events, and the nearest one to my heart probably was Illuminights. I really enjoyed that and, of course, a lot of support. But out of all the things we're able to do, probably the thing that I could really bring home a lot is just the collective effort, working with staff and our fearless leadership here, Mr. Douglas and prior was Mr. Haslip, to be able to do some things that all y'all believed in us to make a difference. And I share a lot of the similar with staff that we all want to make a difference in coming together to, to do the things we're able to do. We met a lot of challenges and we achieved a lot of successes. And it's my heartfelt thanks to you to allow me to be a part of that process. A lot of memories I'll keep forever. Thank you.
Oh. Now, we have to do real work.
This is pretty fun. This is pretty fun.
We can skip the briefing if you want.
No.
Item D1, briefings. Briefing to update board on broadband VATI grants. Mr. Hunter.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Make sure we're live and on the air here. All right, and it all works. So, I want to give you an update on the county's broadband initiatives, and I So I want to give you an update on the county's broadband initiatives, and here's today's agenda. So as you know, our journey started in 2016, and the first step was creation of broadband authority and installation of 25 miles of open access fiber. We then moved to addressing our residential needs. Now Rebecca put this in, Laurie put this slide together, but this is kind of the wow factor of where we've come in this journey. And I think the partnerships that we have with our internet service providers to undertake these, because these are truly the hardest places to put. So almost $12 million. So we learned a lot of lessons along the way. For some of these early projects, I think we put in about 150 connections here out of all the ones that was possible. But we learned about pole permits, we learned about pole heights, we learned about railroad crossings, we learned about timelines associated with the hard-to-reach areas. And hopefully, we can use what we've learned as we go forward. So here's our current projects, and I wanted to give you some quick updates on Bradshaw Road. I know some of these are near and dear to some of us. They're hanging aerial fiber right now and will begin splicing in the coming weeks. Cox believes they're about 45 days away from installing the first customer. Dan Miles with RVRA is organizing an event with the Broadband Road Citizens, Bradshaw Road Citizens Association to help Cox connect with the residents, answer questions, and sign folks up for service. So they're hoping to have that event the week of September 12th. Bent Mountain, the remaining areas, you know, we've lit up some of Bent Mountain, and so the remaining areas are still waiting on a little make-ready work. It's mostly aerial, so is finishing up the make-ready with the poles with AEP. Starlight Lane, they've buried approximately 10,000 feet of conduit and expect aerial installation to start soon. Most of the make-ready work has been completed by AEP, so residents will likely see a lot of activity in the area in the coming weeks as they build the lines down the main road. They're aggressively pushing to have services available sometime in the fourth quarter of this year. Cove Hollow is not such happy news because we're still delayed waiting on the railroad crossing. Both Cox and AEP have escalated these requests, and that's the only thing holding up make-ready work at this time. And as soon as the railroad crossing is resolved, crews are ready to start aerial work. So VATI grants has been an adventure, and as of today, we have three of our four projects. Contracts have been uploaded into CAM system. We're waiting on review by DHCD, which actually started yesterday. And the last two days have been really active between us and our new rep from Department of Housing and Community Development. I have a, I've met with him several times on the phone in the last two days. We have a meeting tomorrow. He's given us feedback from the ISPs, and we forwarded that for the requested information they would like updated. And I'm optimistic that we're going to get some contracts from them real soon and get work started on these projects. I spoke with Steve Sandy recently in Franklin County. They have their contract completed. And as you know, we partnered on this because there's a community right on the border called Windy Gap Village that's in the county, and that'll be part of that project as well. So this year is, I think I put in either five or six intent to apply with DHCD, and we've only come away with one. And that's with Shintel Glow Fiber. Craig Bodatite wanted to participate, but just did not have the time in such a short timeframe to get their proposal together for approval by their board, by this board, and submission on Thursday, which Thursday at midnight is our deadline. Now Comcast called and advised they wouldn't be submitting anything this year, which was also disappointing. DHCD tells me that there may be grant money available in January of this year for additional opportunities. I contacted DHCD, had to cut our call short today because Senator Warner was coming to DHCD today to discuss broadband money. So hopefully, that's a very good sign. Now, also on the good news side, Cox Communications was looking at doing a VATI submission, but after they reviewed the proposals, is this fit into their, the cost of this fit into their ROI requirements. So they're going to be doing this project for 19 passes, and they call it the Canyon Road area. There's several little roads over there around that area, but they're going to do that on their own at no cost to the county, just plus up for the citizens. So going forward is, of course, I think I've told you all this in our last work session, is I'd like to do a full county survey, but I'd like to include not only broadband, but cell service in this survey to see really where our holes and gaps are, to really work. During the course of this, I've had a lot of people approach me with offering up space for cell towers on their property. And I have a few contacts with the carriers already established and like to see where we could go from there. And then we'll sit down together and plan our remaining needs and a plan of attack for it. So Richard told me not to be long-winded, and so at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions or hear any comments you may have.
Mr. Chairman, I have one comment. Just for the record, so the citizens know, the passing cost, I did some calculations. $11.9 million, almost $12 million invested, which includes VATI fund, grants, Roanoke County money, and the vendors, comes up to $5,952 per passing, which is going by a household. And of that amount, $2,712 of Roanoke County's contribution, shared with the remaining difference of $3,240 with the vendors and through these VATI grants. So because of the grant system, we've been able to accomplish much at minimal cost to Roanoke County. But just to let everyone know that broadband is not cheap when it comes to going by each house, that the cost is very high. And if it wasn't for these vendors contributions, but also the state of Virginia, it would be a difficult mountain to climb. So good work on your part and staff's, and good luck in the future.
Thank you, sir.
Speaking of difficult mountains, we can talk about Bent Mountain. Mr. Radford?
Yes, yeah. Bill, just a little more specific questions on when Cox went up to Bent Mountain and they made their presentation to the community, you know, to sort of kick it off. I got several calls from other residents down off the mountain in the lower parts of Hoag's Mill area. And I mentioned that to the Cox vendor, and I mentioned 12 o'clock Nob Road, Mount Chestnut. And that vendor, Cox vendor, said that they had plans to do those routes in the spring.
Mount Chestnut's in the 2022 VATI.
It is.
So if you have constituents, sic 'em on me. As I've been corresponding, I got probably the best letter from a citizen on Mount Chestnut Road.
Okay.
That was asking about what was going on.
Okay.
Said that there's seen crews up there looking at stuff, there was markings on the road, and the rumor was that it might be aliens. And she said she didn't care if it was, as long as they brought high-speed internet with them.
So Mount Chestnut's got a lot of those little private roads with like four or five houses off of them. So those people are kind of fearful that they'll get ignored, so.
We have Cox's project, I don't know if they're divided, their VATI portion is either 10 or 11 separate projects in different areas of the county.
Okay.
So again, if you have folks, I answer every email I get, send me their address, and we'll check it out and see if they're in the pipeline.
Okay. And just from a personal experience, as my profession of constructing new homes, I've lived through the construction of the infrastructure on Bradshaw Road because I've built a house for a client. And we've been through that whole process of seeing the infrastructure being buried, I see it going overhead, and the client is absolutely thrilled. He's an engineer, he loads up a lot of documents. So he's so excited. He thought, he was dreading it, but now it went from, oh no, to this is fantastic. And so he's looking forward to that and what we've done. And then also built a house for a client on Cove Hollow Road, which is, we have to cross that railroad every time to go back through Montgomery County to get over into Roanoke County. And they have very bad cell service, not only there, along with the broadband. So, you know, keep up.
Go to Cataba.
Yeah, keep up the good work.
Cove Hollow is, that was one of our lessons learned. I should have had in my notes that sometimes we fall out of the county and into the other county.
Yep.
But we're still going to provide service to those folks, and we had to do a limited franchise agreement to allow Cox to put service to the people.
Wow.
On Cove Hollow that's Montgomery County. And then back to your construction point, is Cox approached Mr. Kaywood and I not long ago with this Bent Mountain project because there's been houses built up there since we started this project. And so we've made arrangements to include those homes as well.
Right, right. Okay. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Hooker?
I just want to say thank you, and I hope we can still be friends after all this. Because you have really gone through everything with this, and I really, I so appreciate all you've done. You continue to work hard and have been such a great advocate and calming force with people who are pretty emotional over this issue. It's important.
It is, and if the pandemic hadn't taught us anything, it's taught us that.
Exactly.
And to Ms. Hooker's point, if you have people that are having specifically, community meetings, all that, I'm happy to attend those as well and talk broadband with them.
And to continue on to follow up with some of Phil's comments on the cost per passing, you know, that's a substantial amount of money, even though it's gone down from originally, I believe it was a $9,000 number.
So we had some.
And so we're, I guess, cost averaging there and getting it a little bit lower. But the cost of not having broadband for some of these homes, and especially the homes that don't have cell service, to your point, Mr. Radford, and then they have spotty landline service, this is a very critical issue. And I'm so appreciative of this board in prioritizing this issue because it is a safety issue, it's an economic development issue, it's a house value issue. There are so many interconnected issues related to this. So Bill, thank you. Thank you for all you've done and continue to do. And I wanted to follow up real quickly. When you were talking about Cox in the Bradshaw Road area, and you said that some houses may be ready to be served in 45 days? And so there was another timeline that I heard in that area. I thought it was going to be much longer, but maybe not.
As we get the pole permits and the make-ready work done, and when I say that, I guess a lot of people don't understand, if I'm going out to, and Timberview Road's a good example. Okay, so it took a long time. There was 30-some houses that we did up there, and they had, at the front of Timberview, they had internet service. So who knows how long a telephone pole, or electric pole, has been out there planted in the ground with a wire on it. Okay, so there's electrical space on those poles and communication space, and there has to be difference between them. The pole has to be sturdy enough. If there's trees that have grown around there, which they do, they have to be trimmed back. And then a lot of times, the electrical lines have to be moved by AEP before you can allow the internet service provider in to hang the cable on them. So the make-ready work, that sounds easy, but it's really, it's not.
It's the lesson we learned from Timberview, absolutely. But thank you. Thank you for all your work, and hopefully, some of these estimates will be quicker than we anticipate. Thank you.
The only thing I had to say was, we had to support Martha, not, it wasn't going away.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Item E1, new business. E1 is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors declaring its intention to reimburse itself from the proceeds of a financing for costs associated with construction of the new Bon Sac Fire Station, Phase 2 of the Public Service Center, and infrastructure at Explore Park. Ms. Geer.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The county is currently in the development stages for construction of the new Bon Sac Fire Station, Phase 2 of the Public Service Center, and additional infrastructure at Explore Park. These projects are outlined in our fiscal year 2332 Capital Improvement Program, which can be found on our county website under the Budget Division tab. We are currently underway securing our bond funding for these projects. As part of this process, regulations allow the county to reimburse itself for funds currently being spent from bond proceeds at a later date if the county declares its intention to do so before the funds are actually spent. The resolution before you will allow the county to include expenditures that could potentially be made on these projects from the future bond proceeds. Staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Any questions? I would welcome a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion to approve, item E1, Mr. Chair.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. And this is a link to item G4 later in our agenda. Item E2, this is a resolution authorizing an amendment to the Engineering Services Agreement with Hurt &amp; Profit, Inc., for Phase 1 of the East Roanoke River Greenway Project, Benton Magisterial District. This way.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Sorry.
Have some technical difficulties. Thank you. Well, thank you. Good afternoon, I'm Lindsay Webb with Roanoke County Parks Recreation and Tourism, and thank you for your time today. I wanted to start with a brief overview on a few slides, kind of providing the history and background of the development of the East Roanoke River Greenway in Roanoke County. As I know I've reported before in previous meetings, development of the Greenway has been underway here in the valley since the mid-1990s. It's been reiterated with strong public support in 2007 and 2018, supporting the Roanoke River Greenway as the top priority running through the Roanoke Valley. And each jurisdiction where the Greenway falls is responsible for development and securing funding and maintenance of the greenways in each respective jurisdiction. For Roanoke County, development of the East Roanoke River Greenway extends from Roanoke City out to Explore Park and crosses underneath the Blue Ridge Parkway. 2003, a master plan was completed that looked at different routes on both sides of the Roanoke River between the city and Explore Park, and had pros and cons and different challenges associated with the different segments. It was decided at that time that one of the best viable alternatives was to stay south of the river and extend from Roanoke City across the Parkway to Explore Park. And one of those main reasons was to eliminate any conflicts with the railroad that extends along the river on the northern side, and to reduce any needs for bridges across the Roanoke River. Fast forward to today, the map that's before you shows about a six-mile section of the Roanoke River Greenway that extends from Roanoke City to Explore Park that I can personally say I know I've been actively involved with the development of since the past, over the past decade. Roanoke County began applying for grants in 2008, and it took three or four years to have enough funding available to actually start the preliminary design of this section between Roanoke City and the Blue Ridge Parkway. And today, we have been successful in obtaining enough grant funding. We have about over $8 million currently allocated to development of this Greenway out to Explore Park and hope to have the section just west of the Blue Ridge Parkway out to Explore Park built out by 2024, 2025. For the focus of today, we are looking at Phase 1 of the East Roanoke River Greenway between Roanoke City and the Blue Ridge Parkway. We currently, what's before you today is a request for a contract amendment with Hurt &amp; Profit to allow us to continue their construction administration services to begin construction of a Greenway just west of the Blue Ridge Parkway on property that is owned by the Virginia Recreational Recreational Facilities Authority and under lease for Explorer Park. Also, this section of the Greenway has been actively under development since 2008. We've had a series of right-of-way challenges throughout this section. As many of you all know, we recently had a community meeting on June 30th with the citizens in this community to look at whether there's support. And so we have developed a phased approach, and there was a smart-scale application submitted by county staff in August to look at a section that will get us just upstream of the Niagara Dam. And we're hopeful that that funding will be provided in 2025, but we will know more about that section next year. And then the section from Roanoke City out to Phase Two will be something that we'll continue evaluating and working with residents in the community to try to get support for an alignment. So the project is before you today, Phase One. I've mentioned some of this already, but we started in '08 looking to apply for grants. We brought Anderson and Associates, who is currently Hurt &amp; Profit, into the Professional Engineering Services contract in 2012. And since that time, we've been working with Hurt &amp; Profit. They've been working to develop different alignments that have been presented to the community. We've been through right-of-way negotiations with landowners along the corridor, and we've been able to secure easements from about five landowners, but we have not been able to get the full connectivity and acquisitions needed to build the Greenway along this entire stretch. So in 2020, the two red circles that are indicated on this map show where we had areas contiguous right-of-way on the western and eastern termini where we were looking to proceed with development. And then in 2021, Roanoke County was informed by VDOT that there were changes in accessibility requirements. So after deliberating with VDOT and our consultant and the Water Authority, who had given easements for the section on the western end, it was decided that we were going to proceed with the eastern end only, which is presenting, which is what is before you today. So what we're seeing to build with, and this is actually a celebration for many of us in the room that have been involved in this project for a number of years, but that we are going to, we did a bid, bids came in in August for a section, a .35-mile section of the Greenway on the VRFA property with a parking lot. And I noticed the bids came in well and favorable with the funding that we have for the project. So we do have unidentified lowest bidder, and we're waiting for VDOT to provide authorization for us to proceed to construction. And we are proposing to begin construction in October on this section. So it's a celebration for everyone that we are hoping to dig ground very soon. But what the request for you all today before the board is, given that this has been over a decade of a contract with Hurt &amp; Profit, they have come forward to county staff requesting an amendment. We've been through a series of amendments over the past decade to try to adjust for different fees and allocations associated with changes in project scope. We've been able to keep the requests minimal and reallocate existing funds in the contract. But today and before you to request what will be a 10th contract amendment to Hurt &amp; Profit in the amount of $61,000 that will allow us to compensate Hurt &amp; Profit for the work that's been put in to reduce the scope further onto the VRFA property and to allow staff to administer a contract to do construction administration services, the amount of $50,000, which will allow us to extend, get this project through construction, allow Hurt &amp; Profit to provide the services needed to build the project and see this through. So the total request is 42%, which is above the original contract amount. And so the total contract amount will be over $452,000 for this section of the Greenway. There is adequate funding available in the project budget to cover all of this. There's no additional funding required from the county. And we are recommending that the Board of Supervisors authorize execution of this contract to keep the project going through construction. Certainly been a lot of lessons learned and challenges along the way, but we're really excited to hopefully have a ribbon cutting and be celebrating this project in the next six months. With that, I'll be happy to take any questions from you.
Any questions? So I guess as the project goes along, the scope starts to get a little more defined. So as I read this, it looks like the scope got a little more defined, and then the engineers went back and said, hey, you know, in order for us to do this now, we need X number of dollars to manage it, correct? Okay. And looks like you've got a vendor, a contractor tag to implement. So they'll be managing that contractor, correct?
And we'll have MBP, we've issued a contract with MBP, so they'll be providing the third-party independent CEI services to do inspections. And then Hurt &amp; Profit, as the engineer of record, will oversee the design and help with, you know, oversee the inspections and coordinate with VDOT on the project.
Okay. So VDOT is just waiting to give blessings on the vendor?
Yes. What they'll do is their central office, they'll review the bids to make sure everything's in compliance with federal requirements, and they meet all of their civil rights, DVE requirements, and everything's in order. So we're anticipating the next two or three weeks to have authorization from central office to start construction. So we'll schedule pre-bid meetings and hopefully have mobilization and construction underway in October.
Okay. Just wondering, Holt's supposed to be on one of my jobs in October. Kidding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So assuming everything works great and we can start, or they can start construction in October, how long would it take them to construct .35, .35 of a mile?
We hope to have everything constructed while they're pending, and then about four to five months. So we're estimating about six months to get through the winter, assuming that there will probably be some delays. But we're very optimistic to have this at least open in the spring, so.
Is it, it's asphalt, right? Or is it?
Yes, sir.
I just wondered with the asphalt plants closing down.
We're eager to get started very soon. That will certainly have an impact.
They don't really ever close down. They, they'll keep a certain mix ready to go for emergencies. That's good. I would welcome a motion to approve this item.
Motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Webb.
Thank you all.
Item F1, this is a request for public hearing and first readings of rezoning ordinance that consent agenda. F1 is a petition of Aboon Real Estate, Inc. to rezone approximately 32.323 acres from R1 Low Density Residential District to C2 High Density Commercial District and R3 Medium Density Multifamily Residential District to construct a hotel and townhouses located in the 1300 and 1400 blocks of Edgewood Road, Catawba Magisterial District. I would ask for a motion to approve the first reading and to schedule our second reading and public hearing for September 27, 2022.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman, and scheduling the second reading for September 27.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Item G1, first reading of ordinances. G1 is an ordinance accepting and appropriating funds in the amount of $102,200 for fiscal year 2023 for shuttle service to the National Park Service's McAfee Knob Trailhead Parking Lot, Catawba Magisterial District. Ms. Cronis.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. We have good news to share today about funding to accept and appropriate for shuttle service to the National Park Service's McAfee Knob Trailhead Parking Lot. We'll go through some recent history on McAfee Knob. Visitation to McAfee Knob on the Appalachian National Scenic Trail, we call the AT or Appalachian Trail, has more than tripled in the last decade, exceeding 40,000 hikers in 2021. This substantial increase has exacerbated existing challenges and created new ones. As you can see from these images, a very full knob and very full parking lot are some of the challenges. In 2017, the National Park Service Appalachian National Scenic Trail, Virginia's Triple Crown Visitor Use Management Plan began, and that document includes Dragon's Tooth, McAfee Knob, as well as Tinker Cliffs, which is in Bobbitot County. This plan is intended to set a course for the future of the Triple Crown to include recommended improvements to accommodate this user demand. In February and March of this year, there were two public meetings that were held virtually with a comment period through the end of March, and the plan is anticipated to be complete by the summer of 2023. Also in 2017, VDOT obtained Highway Safety Improvement Program funding to construct a pedestrian bridge over Route 311 for the AT, and this is in the right-of-way phase and construction is anticipated in early 2024. In October of 2020, there was very heavy AT visitation, which created severe parking issues along Olcataba Road, which is adjacent to the Trailhead Parking Lot or close by, which resulted in ticketing and towing by Roanoke County Police. In January of 2021, VDOT installed no parking signs along Olcataba Road, which has reduced improper parking. In February of 2021, the Park Service presented the Transit Feasibility Study, which was created initially to figure out how to shuttle folks from the Exit 140 Park and Ride and other destinations to the Trailhead Parking Lot during bridge construction, when they anticipated that half of the bridge would, excuse me, half of the parking lot would be closed for bridge construction. In September of 2021, Roanoke County's Catawba Greenway and Trailhead Parking Lot opened with 25 parking spaces and a new connection to the AT, which helped relieve some of the pressure on that parking lot. And in February of 2022, county staff submitted an application to the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation, DRPT, requesting operating funding for the baseline shuttle scenario identified in that Transit Feasibility Study. The baseline scenario is running from Exit 140 to the Trailhead Parking Lot. Funding was approved by the Commonwealth Transportation Board on June 21, 2022. And now I'll talk about shuttle service details. What I do want to talk about first, though, is that the National Park Service is currently reviewing the special use permit that is required in order to operate service to, shuttle service to McAfee Knob Trailhead. So that is not yet approved, so we are not able to sell tickets yet or to advertise. So we wanted to make that clear. We do anticipate having that permit in hand by the end of the week. So the shuttle duration is starting September 2nd, which is the Friday before Labor Day, until November 27th of this year. This is the end of Thanksgiving week, starting again in March and running through the end of November in 2023. And this is Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, and holiday Mondays for 12 hours, approximately 12 hours each day. The shuttle route, it will pick up riders at the Interstate 81 Exit 140 Park and Ride. You can see an image there in the right-hand corner, which now has a new McAfee Knob shuttle sign on it. We'll have a turnaround in the Catawba Center Parking Lot at the bottom of the mountain, and then the shuttle will climb back up the mountain to drop off riders in the newly constructed shuttle pull-off along Route 311, which is adjacent to the McAfee Knob Trailhead Parking Lot. This shuttle pull-off was designed by Brian Everly in our office, and it was constructed by the Salem residency. So we really do appreciate VDOT's help and assistance in providing a fantastic pull-off for use by the shuttle. We also have a new sign at the top of the mountain for the shuttle as well, installed by Parks, Recreation and Tourism. So the shuttle funding, the fiscal year 2023 anticipated operation costs to be appropriated are $102,200, which includes $57,120, which is 80% of the net operating costs from DRPT, $14,280, which is 20% of net operating costs from Roanoke County, and then $30,800, which is the anticipated fare collection for the program. We do have a shuttle ripping cutting scheduled for September 1st. It is expected to start at 10:00 in the morning at the Exit 140 Park and Ride, so we hope you can join us. Potential future improvements include shuttle stop, turnaround, and restrooms. We did submit an application with National Park Service and property owner support earlier this year for federal lands access program funding, and that would construct a permanent shuttle turnaround, a shuttle stop, restrooms, and parking spaces. This is 100% funding, state and federal, with no local match due to the infrastructure funding that takes care of the match this round, and award should be announced in the next month. We are also looking to the future for shuttle service when the parking lot is going to be completely closed to the public during the bridge construction. This will be in calendar year 2024, so we will need a different shuttle model during that time because there will be no access at all at the top of the mountain. So we're looking at how that could potentially run. And then when the bridge is constructed and completed and the parking lot is back open, it'll be another type of shuttle we anticipate would operate, and we'd also like to look at additional destinations other than just the Exit 140 Park and Ride. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, Ms. Cronis?
If I could just say a quick thing, I just, I really appreciate staff looking outside for alternatives and for how to accommodate this wildly popular hike, and I'm just really excited to have all of this in operation and available for our citizens. So thank you for all your work.
Any other questions?
How much is the, how much is the fare going to be? I didn't.
$5 each way.
Each way.
Two questions.
Yes, sir.
Question number, number one is, assuming worst case that we don't generate the fare revenue, am I correct in my assumption that Roanoke County would have to make up the difference?
There is potential for that, yes. What we did use for our projections was the Transit Feasibility Study, and we tried to take the most conservative ridership numbers and the most conservative costs that we could in order to hopefully make sure that we will achieve that number. But, I mean, it's, it's based upon people, people buying tickets, so we're anxious to have the permit approved so we can start advertising and spreading the word. And we have a number of very engaged and active stakeholders in the group we've been working with for several years on the Visitor Use Management Plan who are very excited to spread the word as soon as we say they can.
Second question is, in our staff report, it says the fare charge will be $5 one-way plus related processing fees.
Yes, sir.
So if I hop on the shuttle, am I paying $5, or am I having to dig in my pocket and get 26 cents for taxes and related processing fees? What are related processing fees?
So the good news is, everything is cashless, so we will not be handling cash on the shuttle. So what the vendor is working on right now is the online processing system where you can pay online. What we do not know at this time is exactly how much those processing fees will be, but any, I think retailer can tell you that there are always charges passed on from the credit card companies for those processing fees. So the base fare is $5. Hopefully, it will be only 26 cents that will be the processing fee, but that's something that, you know, we're still working out in these, in these final details.
So if I show up at the park and ride, I can't give the shuttle driver $5? I gotta, I gotta do this?
No, but you can hop on your phone and go to the website that I'm not going to publicize yet, and click on the button that says, you know, buy shuttle tickets. And it's a, it's a very simple interface that we've been working on with them so that you can very easily and quickly purchase your ticket and hop on the shuttle and head to the top of the mountain.
So if you don't do it in advance, can you just use your card once you step on the bus?
Yes. It's intended for walk-ups.
I like cash.
And one of the things that VDOT in particular has been very helpful with is helping us to publicize some as well, and we do have brown and white signs that have been designed by VDOT that Parks and Recreation, again, has helped us with to be able to put up under the Exit 140 green parking, park and ride signs. So when you come off of Exit 140 and Exit 141, maybe just Exit 140, there'll be brown signs underneath the park and ride sign that says McAfee Knob Trailhead Shuttle. So we're trying a variety of ways to try to get the word out so that if someone does travel from afar and wants to hike McAfee, they're going to hopefully see those brown and white signs and say, oh, there's a shuttle. I'm going to go park in this park and ride. And then once they, you know, see the sign and the website, they can get their ticket purchased online, hop on the bus, and head to the top of the mountain. We're trying to make it simple and easy.
I understand. I would welcome a motion to approve the first reading of this ordinance and to schedule the second reading for September 13.
Motion to approve and schedule it for September 27? Is that what it is?
13.
September 13. Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Item G2, this is an ordinance accepting and appropriating funds in the amount of $559,520 from the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation for the Cortran Program, Hall of Banking.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. I come before you today with an ordinance to accept and appropriate the funds received from the Department of, excuse me, Department of Rail and Public Transportation for the Cortran Program for the total of $559,520. Excuse me. As many of you are aware, the Cortran Program was established in 1985 to assist Roanoke County residents who were age 70 or better or with a disability to provide them with transportation so they could transport throughout Roanoke County, Roanoke City, the city of Salem, and the town of Benton, for whatever needs they may have. Staff started applying for grant funding under fiscal year 2022 through the Department of Rail and Public Transportation and was awarded $119,008 in the urban area only. Staff continued to apply for funding through FTA 5310 through DRPT and fiscal year Staff continued to apply for funding through FTA 5310 through DRPT and fiscal year 2023 and was awarded funding for the urban and rural portions of the county for the first time. The Commonwealth Transportation Board adopted the Six-Year Improvement Program on June 21st, 2022, which included $250,000 in rural capital funding and $288,000 in urban capital funding, totaling $538,000 for the CoreTran program, which represents 80% federal, 16% state, and requires a 4% local match of $21,520, with the total grant being $559,520. The rural capital funding award is directly related to the Board of Supervisors' decision to lower the CoreTran age requirement to 65, which was originally 70. This change will take effect October 1st, and I really believe that DRPT, after they reached out to staff after we had applied for the grant, felt like there was a population that was not being served and graciously was very appreciative of the board recognizing that and making that change effective March 8th. And so, starting October 1st of this year through September 30th, 2023, we will submit for reimbursement on a monthly basis for this grant. Staff recommends approval of the first reading of the ordinance and request scheduling of the second reading for September 13th of this year.
Thank you. Any questions? This is great news. Thank you for all your hard work, and, you know, you had to work a lot with grant applications and everything else that went along with this. This is, it's good news. So I would welcome a motion to approve the first reading of this ordinance and schedule second reading for the 13th.
Chairman, I'm making a motion. Did we approve this item for the first reading and schedule the second reading for September 13th, 2022?
Do we have a second? We have a second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Thank you. Item G3, an ordinance authorizing approval of a new variable width drainage easement, Board of Supervisors, on property owned by Jennifer Lynn Fowler and Vivian Budge Rierson III, locating at Zero Dartre Road, Salem, Virginia, for the purpose of drainage improvements, Kataba Magisterial District, and I will not read the tax map number. Mr. Manier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, member of the board. You have before you a recommendation to accept the ordinance, I'm sorry, the easement from the couple that Mr. Mahoney mentioned, Mrs. Fowler and Mr. Pearson. Both of them owns the property that it's along Dartre Road. That particular area has been, was developed back in 1940s, and it has a lot of drainage issues, and we've been trying to work that out with them. So finally, we had the, they have accepted to donate the easement to the county. The county will be, our, our, our staff will be building the easement along that property to correct, to, to correct the drainage in that area. The, the fiscal impact, Roanoke County will be responsible for the construction and, and the maintenance of the open channel. The estimated cost will be covered in this budget year for, for capital improvements. Staff recommend approval of the first reading of this ordinance and scheduling the second reading for September 13th. I'll be glad to address any questions you might have.
Any questions to Mr. Manier?
I have no questions, but I'm ready to make a motion.
Oh, I have a question. Mr. Manier, when I look at the map that's on page 198 of our agenda, I, I see the location of the easement. Does the, does the drainage grow from the road to the property, the Coles', or does it go from Coles to the road?
Okay, I appreciate the question. I should have clarified that in my presentation. It carries from the road down west. The, the, the map, if you look at the map, the, the road runs north-south, and the drainage runs from the east to the west. So the, the water or the drainage that comes from the east side of the Dartre Road, under the road in that pipe, will discharge into Mr. and Mrs. Fowler and Pearson's property, and that's where the easement will be.
Will we need an easement from the Coles', which is the next property?
At this moment, we don't anticipate that we will have additional easement, but if the plan shows that, then we'll come back before you and, and, and work that out. Currently, based on our survey and our estimated areas of, of the impact, we don't need any other easement at the moment.
That's good. I, I was just afraid that, I didn't want to create a problem for the Coles-
Yes.
-because we're taking water and moving it onto their property. I, I see there's a branch, I guess a little creek there, so that may solve that problem. I just don't want to have a complaint from the Coles a year from now that we're, we're flooding them because of our work.
Yes, sir. I was trying to be brief. The, the meeting has been long, so I failed.
No.
No. So I, I would like to make a motion, but prior to doing that, I would just make a comment, an additional comment, that Ms. Fowler contacted me probably a couple of years ago now, and I really appreciate your diligence in investigating and trying to right this situation, because it was no fault of theirs that they were having this drainage issue, and I, I know it took a lot of research and was probably very problematic. So I appreciate your work and diligence on that. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for approval of the first reading and schedule the second reading for September 13th.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Item G4 is an ordinance of the Board of Supervisors approving lease financing of various capital projects for the county and authorizing the leasing of certain county-owned property, the execution and delivery of a prime lease, and a local lease acquisition agreement, and finance lease and other related actions. Ms. Gerhardt.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman and the members of the board. Today, I present the proposed ordinance for your approval, which authorizes the issuance of lease revenue bonds for the fiscal year 2223 capital projects as detailed in the approved fiscal year 2232 Capital Improvement Program. Again, the lease revenue bonds will provide funding primarily for the construction of a new Bonsec Fire Station, construction of Phase 2 of the Public Service Center, which includes new offices for Parks, Recreation and Tourism Administration, and North and East Park shops, along with renovations to an existing storage warehouse. And it will also install telecommunication conduit and reconstruct a portion of road at Explorer Park to improve cell phone and data service, and open up the eastern end of the park for primitive camping and easier access to the Roanoke River. The proposed structure of the bonds are lease revenue bonds through the Virginia Resources Authority in the amount of up to $13 million of bonds, a true interest cost not to exceed 6%, with a term to maturity not to exceed 20 years. This is an estimate of the maximum borrowing authority that the county may need. The amount of the bonds the county issues will depend on interest rate conditions in the marketplace at the time of the bond sale. The proposed bond issues in the amount not to exceed of approximately $13 million will allow the county to stay well within its limits of the county debt policy approved by the board. Staff recommends approval of the first reading of the ordinance and scheduling the second reading for September 13th, 2022.
Any questions? Yes. With the VRA, I know we, with the lease and the leaseback, I, I see that, obviously, we can only, I guess, commit to the fire station property and to the public service property. The third component of what our borrowing is, is also for the improvements to explore. Is there an issue with VRA since only, only some real estate is being pledged for security for the debt? Is there, do they have heartburn because a mother significant component is for the Explorer improvements, which we don't own the real estate?
No, we actually talked with that. I apologize. When we did our due diligence calls last Thursday, we actually talked about that, and for $13 million worth of bonds, they require 75% of that as collateral for the property. And based on the approximate $6 million for the building of the new Bonsec Fire Station and about 4.7 for the new building that will be associated with the Fleet Service, it meets the requirement for the 75% for collateral. There is one little catch, you know, because that new building at the Fleet Service Center will be on the property that's already pledged with the Fleet Service Center, but they feel like that they can work that out and they'll get back to me. So at this point, we don't see any issues with collateral.
Thank you. Have a motion to approve ordinance G4.
Motion to approve. Mr. Chairman, first reading scheduled second for September 13th.
Do we have a second? Second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Item G5 is an emergency ordinance accepting and appropriating $491,591 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services for fiscal year 2023 to Roanoke County Police Department for School Resource Officers. And due to time constraints for this project, it is requested by staff that the second reading be dispensed with upon an affirmative vote of four fifths of members of the board, and that this matter be deemed an emergency measure pursuant to Section 18.04 of the Roanoke County Charter. Chief Hall.
Good afternoon. The Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services has awarded funding to the Roanoke County Police Department to fund salaries and benefits for eight new, these will be part-time school resource officers, to assign to eight of the 16 elementary schools located in Roanoke County. The awarded state funds total $491,591. While there are no matching funds requested, if we are successful in hiring eight, the approximate first-year cost to the county would be an additional $190,000, a little bit more than that for selection, training, and equipment for those folks. Recommendation is to approve the first reading of the ordinance and dispense with the second reading upon affirmative four fifths of the members of the board due to time constraints. Before I take your questions, I'll just give you a little status update from the briefing we provided to you last month. We have posted these positions. We did that a week ago, Friday, so about 10 days ago. There have been three applications at this point. One of them did not qualify. He's never been a certified law enforcement officer. We did suggest to him that he could apply to be a full-time officer and we put him through the academy. We'll see if he makes that choice. The other two are qualified. They have passed both written and PT testing. We're waiting the results of the job suitability test. They'll have to go through interviews, background investigation, medical psychological testing before we can hire them, followed by whatever training will be required to bring back their certification and get them up to our training standards. So we are looking at, at least several months before they're through that process and into the schools. Now, I do have to point out the limited applicant pool that we have for this. The folks we're looking for have to have been Virginia law enforcement certified within the last 60 months and have had three years of experience working in a law enforcement capacity. So I think we mentioned at, during the briefing, that we would not train somebody in the academy and then immediately put them in schools and SRO before they had experience working as a police officer in the field. So I think it's probably optimistic to think that we're gonna have eight too quickly, but we do have that position posted and advertised on our website and social media to see if we can attract some applicants. So I would be happy to take any questions you might have.
Any questions?
No questions. Just thank you for moving forward so quickly and doing what needed to be done.
I'd welcome a motion to adopt this ordinance as an emergency measure with a four-fifth vote, the way of the second reading.
Motion.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Item G6, ordinance amending Section 13-4 of the Roanoke County Code clarifying and confirming the authority of the Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources to issue certain permits for the taking of wildlife in Roanoke County.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources historically issued certain permits to county residents when appropriate, authorizing the taking of wildlife that are causing to damage to property. Such permits authorize the taking of wildlife above limits imposed by the state's hunting regulations. And at present, Section 13-4 of the Roanoke County Code states in part that, quote, "It shall be unlawful for any person to shoot or discharge any firearm or any other similar gun or device within the limits of the county, except when lawfully hunting in accordance with the fish and game laws of the state," end of quote. I was recently contacted by counsel for the DWR, again, the Department of Wildlife Resources, and he had explained that because of the wording of the county code, which references only hunting in accordance with the, the fish and game laws of the state, that this, the DWR's conservation police officers had some concern about their ability to continuing issuing the permits that they have been issuing in the past. And he had proposed that we clarify the county code to enable them to issue these permits. And it is accordingly proposed that Section 13-4 be amended as stated in the packet. I will read it. It's just a very brief amendment. It would, the county code would now read, again, quote, "It shall be unlawful for any person to shoot or discharge any firearm, except when lawfully hunting or otherwise taking animals in accordance with the fish and game laws of the state," end of quote. And again, to summarize, this would be a clarification that would enable the DWR to continue issuing permits that they have historically issued as appropriate to Roanoke County residents. I do recommend that the board today approve the first reading of this ordinance and schedule a second reading and a public hearing for September 13th. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions to Mr. Lubek? I would welcome a motion to approve the first reading and to schedule a second reading and public hearing. Would we do the public hearing on the 13th, or will we do it on the 27th?
Sir, I believe on the 13th.
13?
Yes, sir.
Motion.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Item H on our agenda is appointments. Does any board member have an appointment that has not been given to a clerk? If not, item I, consent agenda. I would move the adoption of the resolution approving our consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Item J, citizen comments and communications. Don't have any.
No, sir.
Item K, reports. Do we have a motion to adopt a resolution accepting all of our reports?
Motion.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Item L is work sessions. We have two work sessions scheduled for this afternoon and this evening. The first one is a work session to discuss barking dog ordinance with the board. Mr. Lubek and Chief Hall will handle that for us. The second work session is to review the county's comprehensive plan update process, and Mr. Thompson will handle that along with Mr. Jones, our principal planner. Also this afternoon, we have a closed meeting. I would move that we go into closed session pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2, 3711A3 of the Code of Virginia, for discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose where the discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, namely, property located in the Cave Spring Magisterial District. Do I have a second to go into closed session?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Let's now go into recess and go to the third floor for our work sessions and our closed session. We will return at 7 o'clock for evening session, public hearing.